Thank you, Ms. Waterfield. Thank you, Dr. Moats. I'd like to take a couple of seconds and say thank you. Thank you to all the firefighters and what they're doing here in California and in Oregon and in Washington, and say thank you to the National Guard. I guess they're up there also working. And thank you to all of our law enforcement officers, our first responders. This just takes so many people to address the challenges that we have today in California, and we just thank you. And I say that on behalf of all the people in the city of Santa Maria. So thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of September 15, 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Here. Thank you. For our first item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and we have a proclamation for Active Aging Week. And I think as the senior councilperson, oldest in age...
Don't look at me. I'm not going to agree with you. I'll agree with you.
I felt it was appropriate for me to read this proclamation. Yeah, I turned another year old yesterday.
Well, Happy Birthday.
Thank you. Whereas, Active Aging Week is celebrated nationwide for all to appreciate the myriad of benefits of adopting a healthier lifestyle. And whereas the city of Santa Maria observes Active Aging Week to inspire wellness through educational activities to convey the care and support for Santa Maria's older residents. And whereas it is recognized that social well-being and community enrichment benefits the city's active aging population. And whereas the city of Santa Maria has committed to providing quality services to seniors, including leisure services, exercise classes, health screenings, and fitness testing. And whereas active adults who are physically and socially healthy contribute to the city as volunteers, mentors, and role models. And whereas, for the past 10 years, the city of Santa Maria has acknowledged Active Aging Week in its continuous effort to recognize that healthier decisions affect the quality of life. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims October 3 through October 9, 2020, as Active Aging Week in the city of Santa Maria to support the well-being of the senior population and future generations, and encourage community members to remain active.
Thank you. And I'd like to really thank Rex and Parks tonight for providing us active aging gifts, and we all got one, even you, Ms. Soto.
She missed it.
She missed it. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
She didn't have her hearing aid on.
Any blue pills in here?
So the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the agenda. And we have two written comments this evening from Melanie Little regarding the importance of proper tree trimming and keeping trees healthy in the city. And one email was also received from Phil Hamer, I believe, requesting additional bike lanes in the city, particularly between East Battles and East Jones along the cemetery and Allen Hancock College. Copies were provided to the council this evening, and they're posted on our website agenda. And we do not have anyone online right now to speak.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comments?
I'm sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so I can give a brief COVID update if you'd like.
That'd be great.
We've had some changes in the reopening structure since we've last reported to the City Council. Previously, we had the RISE Guide and the Santa Barbara County's reopening plan to consistently follow the state health orders. Since then, the state has developed its own reopening guidelines based on case growth and number of cases in a particular county. And we're one of more than half of the counties that's in the so-called purple zone, which is still in the bad zone. So we're limited to what can reopen. The most recent reopenings we've been able to have are the mall and our library, and hair salons and barbers. So it's still real limited of what type of businesses can be opened. But the good news is, we have been seeing our case numbers going down and our hospitalizations go down. And the county's confident that in a few weeks, we could likely get down to the red zone, which would allow more reopenings. And then there's two tiers below that. A few of the counties in the state are at the lowest tier where they can essentially reopen most things with very little regulation. But the primary regulations that still are impacting all counties is limiting on social distances and groups. So the recognition is still that the virus transmits more easily in mixed-group settings. And so as a result of that, then the mask order from the governor still impacts all the counties as well. So even if it's down to the lowest tier and one of the counties has few cases and few growth, there's still required to have social distancing and masks. And so in our county, we have the opportunity to have the review by the state, the review of our numbers by the state every three weeks. And so we think we can have that review here. Our trends are in the right direction, and we think we can have the review here in another month or so and be able to see if we can ease some restrictions and ask for the county or the state to be able to approve those. And as far as our... So the mall is open. The stores have limited reopening there. The barbers and salons are reopening. They're going through the self-certification process through the Santa Barbara County Public Health website. And that again is a good website with about six steps to show people what guidelines they should follow when they're reopening their business, what training they need in place, what amenities they need to add or mitigation measures, whether they need to put up germ guards or put in sanitizer, cleaning solutions for the public who use their facilities. And then they get, if they agree to do all that, they get a self-certification sign for the front door so the public can know that they're open in accordance with the guidelines. And we're in the final stages of doing that for our own library. The reopening of the library is limited to 25%. And so we've... Our branch libraries in Orchid and other parts of the county, we've been more easily able to open because they're smaller facilities, and you can limit the 25% of people coming in and out a lot easier. Our library here is a large facility, so we've had to have some modifications to put in place, such as germ guards, distancing, reducing chairs, reducing seating areas, things like that that are taking a little bit more time to mitigate. But our goal with the library is to be able to reopen it when we know it'll be safe, and we're not going to have to re-close it down after someone gets sick there. We want to assure the public that when we do reopen it, it is safe. And in the meantime, we are still providing library services for walk-up. People can place orders online through the Black Gold or the city's website for the library, be able to get their library books and drop by the library, and we have them for them at the window there. So we are still providing library services, and library materials are still circulating. So we're adapting to the changing regulatory environment that the states has here, but we are seeing that it's becoming more informed and more in line with some of the reopening plans that other states have had too. So it's good to see that in that sense as well, that we're at least on a path of stabilization and hopefully in the right direction with being able to further reopen.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield.
By the news, it says that California's cases are declining in regards to COVID. My question to you is that when you give us the weekly report, and you indicate the cases in Santa Maria versus the recovery, a lot of times, that's probably about 75 people with COVID. Is that what we're to understand when you subtract the COVID cases and then the recovery cases? Subtract that. So we seem to be going down in regards to that. So do you know the state takes any of that into consideration in opening up businesses?
Yeah, they will. They still look at it as a county-wide basis. So the numbers I report to the, excuse me, to the City Council each Monday are city-specific. And so the state looks at the county numbers.
Okay.
And the city makes up the bulk of the county numbers. So as our trend goes down, the other, the county's overall trend goes down. The state is overall still in the purple zone. So the statewide, so there's the two metrics that regulate the reopening. One is new COVID positive cases per day per 100,000 people, and the state is at 7.7. And it needs to be less than seven in order to start easing the restrictions. In our county, Santa Barbara County, is more than seven as well. And then the positivity rate statewide is still 4.2, and ours is about 8.1 overall. And one positive note on that is the county health department last week announced that they're offering testing to anyone now who wants testing. And prior, it had been restricted only to testing people who had symptoms or essential workers. And so I think by offering testing to anyone who wants testing, you'll have a lot more people being tested, not just the sick people. And that is expected to drop the positive test number below 8%. So that's why I think we're encouraged to see that we're on the right track citywide, but also countywide, and would then be able to petition to the state for restricted, reducing some of the restrictions we now have.
Okay, so when those go lower, then we can open up the theater and the bowling alley, hopefully?
The bowling alley, yeah, it's, there's, let's see, I have that, but it's not, the next tier is still, there's still pretty significant restrictions. But it opens up some league play, some amusement activities. But it's still, there's still a big restriction on gatherings overall.
Okay.
Yeah, so weddings and other activities like that are still restricted. Indoor church services are still restricted. They still would be for a foreseeable future. So, and we talk about it as staff, I mean, we anticipate this type of restrictions will be in place for some, in some way, for probably a year or so, actually, as the cases decline.
And so not all the stores in the mall are open?
They can be. They have, I don't think they are, though. I think some of the corporate stores have decided not to reopen, and for their own corporate reasons.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, for hiring people or not doing the mitigation measures, waiting for the restrictions to ease. But they can be now, and a number of the stores have reopened, and they have the restrictions on people, excuse me. They have restricted occupancy in their stores as well.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, Dr. Moats.
Yeah, Mr. Stillwell, I'm anxiously looking forward to when we can dine indoors again.
Yeah.
So what color code level do we have to get to before we open up the restaurants indoors?
That would be, that's the next one. So, let's see. Yeah, so the red category. So if we get our cases down to daily new cases of four to seven per 100,000, and positive cases below eight, then we would be able to open up restaurants more.
So then the goal is to get a bunch of asymptomatic people without any symptoms to go get tested to...
That helps on the one category, yeah. The other category is the number of positive cases. So if you're testing a lot of people, you want to make sure that there's not a lot of positive people.
I think we should restrict the testing to the people that are going to be negative, the healthy people, yeah.
What are the counties that are, is yellow the lowest?
Yeah, yellow is minimal, so that's most indoor business operations are open, but with modifications.
But what are the counties?
I think there's three or two. And I don't know. I think that's Modoc way up in the upper.
Modoc in Mendocino or...
And then I don't know. Is that Alpine?
Butte.
Yeah, some county over by Nevada and some county by Oregon.
Alpine has 1100 people.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, someone has a destination they'd like to go, they can drive up to Alpine County or Modoc.
Yeah, and then there's moderate, and that's most of the northern, like the very northern counties.
Of course, it's all on fire right now, right?
Yeah, it's all on fire.
Okay, well, that shoots out.
But the majority of the state is widespread from, basically from the north part of the Bay Area down to San Diego. Yeah, purple widespread.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read number three, item number three?
The following routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion, and these items are discussed only on request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any items that need to be pulled, but I just want an explanation in item 3I. And I notice Mr. Springer is here, and that's in regards to the Santa Maria Regional Landfill, the disposal fees, only because I've just been getting some phone calls of why are the fees going up. And I'm glad you're here because you can explain that to our audience.
Any others that you want pulled? Okay. Mr. Springer, 3I.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I think it's important to note that this is only the second increase that the Utilities Department has come forward to the City Council for a rate increase on our tipping fees in the last 20 years. We have not had a rate increase at the gate in the last eight years. And there have been significant changes in that time, of course, in the regulatory environment, and of course, the cost of operations. It's not immediately that we came to council and asked for a rate increase with our tipping fees. There are many things that we did at an operational staff level to drive efficiencies which would reduce costs. Some of those include utilizing professional-level survey-grade equipment to minimize the amount of daily cover, which leaves airspace open for trash and refuse, that sort of thing, which means that we extend the life of our landfill longer, which means we have, we can extend the cost of our capital costs at Los Flores and that sort of thing. Other efficiencies that we've also worked on is that we worked with CalRecycle and the local enforcement agency on allowing our existing cell to go higher. We also worked with the Community Development Department on the Sequa for that, which allows us to continue to utilize our existing site, where we already have sunk infrastructure costs with respect to administration buildings, the scale house, the streets, that sort of thing. On top of that, we've reduced expenses where we can. We eliminated an agricultural plastic baling operation with, interestingly enough, we've talked a lot over the last couple of years about the recycling market going away. Part of a program that the city landfill used to operate was an agricultural plastics baling operation. So the black plastics you see, the white plastics you see on the strawberry fields, that sort of thing. We had an operation where we took those materials in, we paid a third-party vendor who then would put them into bales, and they would market those. Well, that market has dried up, and in fact, it was costing the city money to operate that program. So we eliminated the program, and now if those materials are brought to the landfill, if they can't find another recycling facility, we charge them at the hard-to-handle rate, which is more in line with the cost for the operation there.
Okay.
In addition, we've also looked when our heavy equipment, we have a lot of expensive equipment out there, bulldozers and compactors and that sort of thing. As each of those come up for replacement, we don't immediately go out and spend that money. We look at the operation, what the needs are. If we can downsize the equipment, we do. If we can rebuild the equipment, where instead of buying a new piece of equipment, we go through our vendor and get a certified rebuild where we can extend the life of that vehicle, which, as all of us know, if we drive older cars on the road, it reduces those costs. So in addition to that, we brought an item to council maybe a year ago, two years ago, where we looked at trying to attract more roll-off materials. So there are vendors throughout the northern part of Santa Barbara County that go out. You see these on construction sites, the big giant trash containers, what we call roll-offs. And we brought an item to City Council to try to attract that flow, that tonnage, which for us, without adding staff, without adding equipment, we could bring that extra material across our scales and increase revenue in that way. Frankly, it's only after we've done all of those things that now we are coming to the City Council and saying, you know, the increased costs for the regulatory environment with CalRecycle, the things we have to do with APCD regarding the landfill gas, all of those things have pointed us to, now after eight years, we are coming to the City Council and asking for these rate increases, and it would only be the second one, as I mentioned, in about 20 years.
Okay, fantastic. Another question that just came up. Since we have taken out all of the recycle bins, are you receiving more plastic bottles than you had before, or any other plastic materials? And is that harder to dispose of at the landfill? Are you doing anything special there?
We're not doing anything particularly special about that. The real difficulty with the recycling market is when the Asian market said, "We're not taking that material." The cleanliness of the material has gone up significantly. There are still markets, but the cost for a vendor to take that out of the blue bin, stream it, package it, get it ready, the shipping costs, all of that have increased, which increase our cost to dispose of that. We still have requirements as a municipality to divert a certain percentage of the materials that we receive. So the cost, the burden for that on that recycling is an expense we have to bear.
Okay, so we're still diverting a portion of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no other questions, I'd like to go ahead and adopt the consent calendar submitted.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to review a supplemental environmental impact report, a specific plan amendment, and a general plan land use map amendment and zone change for the Moretti-Blosser family to amend the Blosser Southeast specific plan to modify the land use and zoning designations.
Staff reported to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Ing.
Oops, that's not Mr. Ing. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Patino.
Good evening.
And council members. My name is Dana Eady. I'm the principal planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm going to be giving the staff presentation this evening. This is an aerial view of the project site. The site is located at the northeast corner of Blosser Road and Battles Road. It's approximately 145 acres in size, and it's currently utilized for agricultural cultivation. Surrounding development to the site includes existing residential development to the north across Stoll Road, also to the south across Battle, Battles Road, and to the west of the site. There, also to the west of the site, there is some existing industrial zoned land and industrial uses. And then to the east of the site, you have Manami Park and Adam School. Also, the Santa Maria Valley Railroad runs along the eastern side of the property that's just adjacent to Devo Street. So this site is a part of Area 5 of the city, and it's identified as Area 5B. Area 5B is currently approved for the development of up to 976 residential units. The other areas in Area 5B include Area 5A and 5C. And those areas are mostly developed now. Area 5A, well, if you combine 5A and 5C, there's about 714 existing residential units. So in Area 5, there is 976 units that have yet to be built, and those are all located in Area 5B. So the existing zoning and land use designations in Area 5B include convenience commercial zones, which are located in the northwest and southwest corners of the site. And then the remaining areas include residential development. So there is a small lot development, about 82 acres, and then a medium R2 residential development in the northwest corner, adjacent to the commercial site. And then there's another area, it's about 24 acres, that is zoned for a new school. And then adjacent to that, in the northeast corner, you have some area that is zoned recreational open space.
Excuse me, do you have a pointer so we can see where you're talking about, like with...
Yeah, let me see if this, oh, this, no, it won't work. So I can explain with the colors. So...
Okay, where the school?
Yes. So the school is kind of the mint green color. It says CF, and then the zoning is, says PD/PF. And then the park area is the darker green color that's in the northeast corner. The residential zone I was talking about is in yellow, and there's also residential that's shown in kind of a light brown color, and also high-density residential that's in kind of an orange color there. Sorry, I don't have a pointer to show you, but... And then the commercial zone is the pink color on this map. So this is all the existing zoning and land use designations that are there. The entire site has a planned development overlay on it, so any future development there requires a planned development permit. So the applicant is requesting to rezone the site and to change some of the land use designations on the site. In this slide, the commercial zoned area is located in the, it's colored pink, and it's located in the northwest corner of the site. There are areas now with high-density residential, and those areas are the orange-brown color, and those are located on the north side of the site, adjacent to Stoll Road, and then in the southwest corner of the site. And then there's an area of R1, which is single-family development for single-family residential lots, and that's in the yellow color in the center of the site. The school site is still in the generally same area. It's the lighter green color there. And then the recreational open space area has been moved to the east side of the property, and it lines up with Manami Park, which is across the street. So this table provides a comparison between the existing zoning and acreages and the proposed zoning. So under the existing zoning of the site, as I mentioned before, there's a potential to build 976 residential units. So with this amendment, the small lot residential development area would be eliminated, and it's replaced by single-family R1 zoning. So you end up with 474 single-family residential lots. And then the other larger change is that the high-density residential area, it's currently eight acres, and that is increased to around 28 acres. So that increases the number of high-density residential units from 176 up to 631. So overall, the change in the plan allows for 129 more residential units than what is currently approved for the site. So it results in a total of 1,105 residential units. And the areas that are zoned for the new school and the parks, those areas are, acreages are relatively the same. The open space area is increased by about five acres. So the project includes an amendment to the specific plan that applies only to Area 5B. And the specific plan is intended to guide the future development of the site. And it includes a number of different areas. So it guides the development for transportation and circulation, sewer, water, and drainage. It also contains some standards and guidelines for future development within the different zones. So there's development standards that address both residential and commercial development, and they include some standards for landscaping and lighting and architecture, and examples of some of the home designs. There's also some amenities that will be added to the area, and so there will be a public park that will include soccer fields and playgrounds, as well as basketball courts. There's going to be some pedestrian pathways and bikeways throughout the area, and landscape parkways. This is the roadway circulation plan that was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. This project was presented to the Planning Commission in August. And so the circulation plan, I think the main items to note here is that Western Avenue and La Brea Avenue will be extended through the site, and there will be a new roundabout or traffic circle that's located in the center of the site. or traffic circle that's located in the center of the site. The specific plan, or this graphic in the plan, also shows some pedestrian crossings in yellow that cross the roadways. And one of the changes that was made at the Planning Commission, you'll see in this graphic at the intersections of Battles Road, which is to the south, and Western, as well as Stoll Road and Western, the legend notes that as an intersection control feature. And when the project was at the Planning Commission, there was direction to include this, so that it enables the specific plan to provide some flexibility in whether a traffic signal is installed there or potentially a roundabout. And that was direction from the Planning Commission to be included. So, as I mentioned, this site does involve the extension of Western Avenue through the site, and it's, and it's an extension of Western from both the north, north of the property, and also south of the site. So, I wanted to show a couple of photos here of the two different existing sections of Western, and then I'll go over what this project is proposing. So, currently, north of the site, this is more of a traditional neighborhood. The roadways, the lanes are 20 feet each, and they allow for on-street parking on the street. And then you have a five-and-a-half-foot parkway and a six-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalk. So, the overall rideaway is 64 feet. So, this is an example of Western Avenue that is located south of the site, and this is in Area 5A, and it's the newer section of roadway to the south. So, with this section of roadway, there are 14-foot-wide travel lanes and eight-foot-wide bike lanes. There is no on-street parking permitted in this section of Western. The landscaping on Western varies. So, there's a wall that's along the edge of the road, and then there's a landscaped area, and it varies there from four feet up to a maximum of eight feet wide. And that, the reason that it varies that way is that the wall itself varies along that road. It meanders, and so there are some areas that are as wide as eight feet, and in those areas, you can plant both trees and shrubs. And then when it goes down to less than that, then you have areas that are just planted with shrubs and no trees. Sidewalk is five feet wide, and then you also have an eight-and-a-half-foot-wide landscape parkway that has trees in it. So, the rideaway on this section of Western varies. It's from 79 feet all the way up to 87 feet, and that's where you have the eight-foot-wide landscaping by the wall, and as well as the rest of the section that's shown there. So, this is the collector roadway design that was recommended by the Planning Commission. It applies to both Western Avenue and La Brea Avenue. And this section of roadway, it includes 12-foot-wide travel lanes, so the travel lanes are slightly narrower than what's to the south, and five-foot-wide bike lanes. There is no on-street parking that is, would be permitted, and this is a concern by the Public Works Department, mainly because the project does include quite a bit of high-density residential development, and so quite often during traffic committee meetings, there are parking concerns that are raised, and so I did want to mention that in the presentation. Also, this section of roadway includes a bit of a wider landscape parkway, so it's 10 feet. There's an eight-foot-wide multipurpose trail, and that would allow for pedestrians and some bikes. And then there's an eight-foot-wide planted buffer. And so, by having the eight-foot-wide planted buffer the entire way down these roadways, it does allow for trees to be planted on either side of the multipurpose trail. And so, really, the idea behind this design is that it is intended to result in more of a pedestrian-friendly feel, more landscaping, narrower roadway, which should help assist in slowing traffic. And the rideaway width for the road is 86 feet, so the widest part of the existing road south of Western is 87, so it's fairly similar as far as the width of the rideaway. This is the, an example of the sewer and water infrastructure that would, that is included in the specific plan. It generally follows the existing roadways and would connect up to, with the city's existing infrastructure.
I have a question on this one. So, La Brea Street, is that going to go straight through the open space fields, or it's going to stop at the end right there?
It will stop right at the end there by the open space. So, this is an exhibit from the specific plan that addresses drainage. The plan includes water or drainage facilities that, again, follow the proposed new roadways. One item to note in this slide that I'd like to discuss is regarding the existing Battles Channel. So, the specific plan proposes to improve the channel by undergrounding it, and so that would essentially result in more of a traditional look that's similar to what's across the street. So, by undergrounding that channel, you could have more of a landscape parkway there, and it would look different than what's shown in the slide below, which is the existing channel that's, that's west of Blosser Road. That's more of an open channel with some landscaping and then the bridge over it. And then also, the project does include a new retention basin that would be located in the southwest portion of the site. And at this time, well, one thing I wanted to mention to you is, so the existing specific plan that's in place at this point identifies the Battles Channel as remaining basically how it is with the installation of a bridge, so it would look very similar to what's shown in that slide, in that photo at the bottom of the slide there that shows existing Battles Channel west of Blosser. That's really what the existing plan has. So, the amended plan is proposing to change that by undergrounding that drainage area. So, the specific plan includes these examples of architectural design for future residential and commercial development on the site, and these designs are consistent with other designs in the Santa Maria area, and they're intended to guide future developers when they are designing homes and commercial structures on the site. And then this slide shows some of the amenities that would be incorporated into the new park, and that includes some picnic areas, barbecue areas, walking paths, and playgrounds, and some seating areas. This is the conceptual park design that would be located in that recreational open space area. So, it includes four different soccer fields, also some playgrounds for different ages of children, and it would be located just a setback from the Santa Maria Valley Railroad, which is just to the east of the site. So, a supplemental environmental impact report was prepared for the project, and the draft was completed in January of this year, and it was circulated for public review and comments. The city received eight comment letters on the document, and all the comments that are received have been addressed in the final document. And the project impacts, some of the project impacts that were identified are shown in this area. There are mitigation measures that are included that address air quality and aesthetics and visual resources, and some of the other areas that are shown on the slide. And all of the mitigation measures that were included in those areas were able to reduce the level of impact the less than significant. There are two different areas where there are significant and unavoidable impacts, and those were identified in the area of air quality. One is related to the emissions from mobile sources, like vehicles, and then there's another impact that is related to cumulative overall impacts to air quality. The impacts to air quality are the same impact areas that were identified for the existing project that's approved there, or the existing zoning and specific plan. So, there aren't any new significant and unavoidable impacts that go beyond that. And we have included a statement of overriding considerations for approval of the project, and that is included with the staff report. So, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution to certify the environmental impact report, as well the statement of overriding considerations and the other environmental documents. Also, adopt a resolution to amend the general plan land use policy map designations that are on Area 5B. Introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting the zone change for Area 5B, and adopt a resolution to amend the specific plan for Area 5B so that it's consistent with the other amendments that we're making this evening, or recommending this evening. And then introduce an ordinance and continue it to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the specific plan for the zoning designations. So, thank you. That concludes the staff presentation. I'm available for questions. We also have staff here from Public Works, and...
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You've indicated that there is no parking around the residential areas, off-street parking or on-street parking. Where are these people going to park that are going to utilize the three soccer fields?
So, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Cordero, I'm just going to go back to this slide here. So, the park does have a parking area. It's, in this slide, it's actually at the bottom of the slide, there's a large parking lot that's there, and so people that are visiting the park can park in that area. Also, the streets where parking would not be permitted is only on the two collector roadways, so that would be on Western and La Brea. There would be on-street parking permitted in, on the local roadways, but we just don't have those shown yet because those will be developed in the future when the residential areas are subdivided further.
Do you know offhand how many vehicles, the parking spaces, there are in the, what is the bottom of that diagram?
It's over 100.
Over 100?
Yes, and we did work with Rec and Parks to design that plan, and so there's quite a bit of parking there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Waterfield.
Can we go back to the slide, this one that I have in?
Yes.
Okay, we have a roundabout right in the middle of the 1,105 units. Now...
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Waterfield, you have to, you have to speak into your mic.
I'm doggone it. Okay, so my concern is, the 1,105 units, you're going to have at least four people per home, let's say, two to three cars per home. A lot of people leaving at the same time. I think that roundabout is going to be more dangerous than a safety feature in regards to that. When I get up at 5:00 in the morning and I head down Stoll at 5:30, there are tons, there's tons of traffic on that road. And that's going to be the same way with people coming out of those, that development as well. So, I don't know if maybe a signalite instead of a roundabout would be a safer traffic control system. I know you have exits going onto Stoll, onto Battles, and onto Blosser, but that's a lot of people at one specific time going to specific places, and that's just at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and then you've got another section of workers leaving. So, what was the, what was the thought process of the roundabout there?
Well, one thing I, oh, and Mayor Patino and Councilmember Waterfield, one thing that I would like to mention is, the roadways that are, the local roadways that would be within each of the residential zones, this is conceptual, so that hasn't been developed yet. When these, when those zone districts are further developed, like, we'll have to do tract maps for those, and then there will be existing roadways that are put in that essentially connect up with Western and La Brea and other areas of the site. I think that we reviewed, and we worked with Public Works on this, reviewed through a traffic study what would be the best, the best infrastructure there to accommodate the traffic and the, yeah, and with the school district as well, and the roundabout was the recommended traffic control feature there.
Yeah, I think, I think mostly it probably was for aesthetic purposes, but I think, and mentioning the school, that's going to bring a lot of, a lot of parents dropping in and dropping off, not to mention the open space when you have soccer games and you've got people coming in from all over the place. I don't think the roundabout is the safest option that we have, and that's just my thought. I, I've looked at that, and especially now with the increase of the units and a lot more people living in that one specific area was my, my major concern in regards to this. You know, otherwise, you know, everything looks, everything looks good in regards to the, the buildings and the homes and all those things, but this, the flow of traffic with people coming through and the school and the open space, a lot of outside people coming in as well.
So, are you saying that the roundabouts are going to be on, on Stoll there?
It's right in the middle.
Or just right in the middle? I thought you said Battles and in the middle.
So, the roundabout is proposed in the center of the site where the roadways connect.
Okay.
The, at Battles and Western and Battles and Stoll, there's an option there to do a signal, or there could potentially be a roundabout there as well.
No.
Okay, that's not going to work.
They need a, they need a obby signal.
I, I have been involved in the roundabout discussion on 166, and I know the state of California is trying to push them, but that, to me, is just not workable for several reasons. Now, there is places like over in Bakersfield where you've got a lot of land, but you've got trucks and trailers. We have, we're in an ag community, and that, with the kind of space we have there, I don't believe that would work. Dr. Moats.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about the roundabout. Isn't it true that the roundabout occupies a lot more land than a signalized intersection?
Councilmember Moats, it really depends, and we have not studied an actual roundabout in either of those areas yet. The specific plan really just allows for flexibility, and that came from the Planning Commission as a recommendation to your council.
So, then we're not making any decision on whether it's going to be a signalized intersection or a roundabout tonight. We're just saying we should keep our options open.
Well, right, so the specific plan keeps the option open. Your council could determine that you would, we could specify that it be a signal. The Planning Commission just really wanted to have that option there, and so that's why we changed it to just say intersection control feature and, and leave it open.
So, although the traffic studies suggested a roundabout might create easier flow of traffic, isn't it true that the developer wants it to be signalized? And also, if it were a roundabout, would that cause pre-existing homes to be infringed upon?
So, and Lori Tamura can speak on this, but my understanding is they don't have any concerns with the roundabout that's in the center of the site. That hasn't been an issue at all. The question that she's raised is about the changes that were made that I just mentioned at Western and Battles and Western and Stoll Road. And I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Oh, if it takes more space to create a roundabout, would that cause some of the homes that are, say, south of Battles or north of Stoll? homes that are, say, south of Battles or north of Stoll to become infringed upon?
There is a potential for that, but we have, again, we haven't studied it, but there could be a potential for that.
Another issue that I was curious about was the storm drainage basin. I think in the original plan, it wasn't conceived that they were going to have to do anything more to create more capacity for storm runoff. Is this something that we have to do, that we anticipate that because we're going to hardscape instead of being agricultural fields, there's going to be that much more runoff that it's going to require additional facilities to handle it?
Yes, so it is going to require a study that determines what type of improvements are required to be made to that drainage channel. What is different is that this specific plan is proposing to design it so that essentially it's more of an underground channel, so that the, you can do a bit more with it, you can add more landscaping on it, you can make it a bit visually improved, a visual improvement over what is west of the site, which is just the open channel.
So, undergrounding then is more for an aesthetic thing rather than a functional thing?
Um, yes.
But isn't it greatly more expensive to underground it than to perhaps leave it the way it is?
Um, it may or it may not. I mean, again, we haven't gotten as far as getting the study and doing any of that additional work. This plan is just including some framework for development, and so that would occur down the line when additional permits come in to develop the site.
Thank you.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is about the widening of the, of the trail, the walk trail, walk path?
Let me go back to that.
Yeah, so I noticed that on Western currently, where the other part of the Area 5 development, right there on Western, that those are 14 feet wide. And so, I drive by there quite often, and cars just speed by because of how wide the roads are, so I'm really pleased to see that we are talking about narrowing it a little bit more. So that's great. My question is around, and I know that Councilmember already, Councilmember Cordero already asked, but the concern around not be having any street parking, but you mentioned that that's not going to be on the main roadways, that's going to be on, that's only for the main roadways, but not the residential parts, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to expand a little bit on something that Dr. Moats was saying regarding the underground, something that isn't mentioned and should be considered, I think, is that when you have it underground, you eliminate the, the dangers of children playing and getting in the culvert while the water is, is, is going down.
Kids love to play in water, Mr. Cordero, they love it.
Yeah, they do. And, and I think that even though that, that's not a common problem in our area, making it disappear and go away and be strictly underground, I, I think has an advantage that hopefully we would never have to use. But, but it does do that, even if it is a little bit more expensive, it minimizes the threat that moving and rushing water has to the inquisitive young person, or, or older person. Somebody getting in there while the thing is going, while the water's traveling fast, and I just think that that's something to consider.
You're just no, you're just no fun at all.
Just something to consider.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Soto.
My question is about, I know there's discussions around, about roundabouts and signal, traffic signal lights. What's, what's the approximate cost that, for the city on, on maintenance on these traffic signal lights?
I think I'd like to ask Public Works to assist with that question.
Here we go. Good evening, Councilmember Soto, Honorable Mayor. So, maintenance for roundabouts as opposed to signals, is that, is that the question?
My question, yes, sure. Yeah.
Sure, so, so we have, we have both in town, obviously we have examples of both of those. Both of them have different, different challenges. The roundabouts are, because they have a continuous flow through them, they're harder to shut down and repave, for instance, because it's, you rarely have to shut the whole thing down. Whereas a signal, you can close off legs, you can turn, you close a lane and, and repave certain portions of it, restripe it. So we, we have been challenged with the roundabouts to pick a time, we'd have to do it at night, we'd have to do it on weekends. So it is a little more of a challenge in terms of, of the practical reality of maintaining them. Costs, the roundabouts tend to be a bit cheaper, we don't have all the electronics that need to go into it, we don't have to maintain a, a signal box, and, and we have to put loops in, and loops break, and you need to replace those. So, that probably weighs towards the, the roundabouts being a bit cheaper, but probably on, but, but more of a challenge in terms of when you need to do it, how do you shut it down? So there's, there's kind of pros and cons to both of those.
And then my other question is about traffic, traffic flow. I was reading how, how roundabouts often, not often, but it's been proved, studies have shown that they reduce injuries significantly when there's traffic collisions versus when it's a straight-on intersection. Here in, and I don't know if you would have this information or if someone in PD, but how many car accidents do we see on a, on a roundabout versus streetlights?
Right. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. The, they are different type of traffic control features, they have different types of accidents. Both accidents happen in both of them. The roundabout tends to have less severe accidents because you eliminate those T-bone type, someone running a signal and T-boning somebody else. They tend to be side swipes, they tend to be those type of accidents that are, tend to have less injuries, not necessarily less number of accidents. So you, you could have a roundabout that has a higher number of accident rates, but they're less severe. So, you're right, I'm familiar with those, probably read some of those same things, that there is a, there are less severity to the, to the accidents. Roundabouts, the biggest, so that's one of the points for roundabouts, the other one is they tend to have better level of service. They, they're able to pass more people through the intersection in the same period of time than a comparable signal. So those are the two advantages to, to roundabouts.
Thank you. And then my next question, I know that some of my colleagues alluded to, you know, seeing a heavy flow of, of big trucks, right? Especially on this part of town, on the west part of town because of, you know, the, you know, the, like, you know, the packaging sites there and ag land. And so, would you, can you, can you tell us more or less where you would expect to see the heaviest traffic flow for those big trucks, like, throughout the day? Do you think that they, would you say that they would go through this neighborhood, through La Brea or through Western, or would you see them more on other parts of the city?
Yeah, I would say La Brea would be less than Western. There's not a lot of reason to come off of Blosser, turn onto La Brea, and then there's nowhere for them to go. So, I'd say La Brea would be a low-volume truck, truck route. The north-south flow for Western will have, will have some flow for, I would imagine, commercial vehicles, although Blosser is a higher classification. So those, those will tend to draw some of the higher, with a higher number of lanes and, and higher capacity.
Yeah. Yeah, what I, what I've seen is just, those truck drivers just want a straight shot down to, down to Blosser, or down to like, you know, the produce stop. So, yeah, I'm thinking Stoll, Betoavia, even maybe Donovan, but, yeah, no, thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Moats.
So, if there's...
Yeah, back up.
If there's a proposed roundabout at Western and Stoll, aren't there a lot of 18-wheelers that are going to be coming on Stoll that would then have to go through a roundabout?
Yes, Stoll is...
Does that bother you at all?
Stoll is a high-volume truck route, absolutely.
You know, I think the truck drivers would prefer to go in, with 18-wheelers in a straight line, rather than to have to veer into a roundabout. I like roundabouts myself, but I've talked to a lot of people that fear entering roundabouts. They just don't feel comfortable merging into traffic, and they become confused when they're supposed to stop and supposed to enter. What are the psychological aspects of entering roundabouts?
It takes some practice. I, I think when the city first introduced roundabouts back 10, 15 years ago, we even had a video that showed, how do you, how do you enter a roundabout? What do you do? What lane should you be in? So, it is, it is a newer feature for, for drivers. So, I, I recognize that, I agree. The, and the truck, especially double trailers, I think are the ones that have the most challenge with roundabouts. We, we try to address that by having a mountable truck turn in the center of the roundabouts, so if they tend to off-track, they have a room for that, for that second row of trailers to do that. Not a perfect solution, it's, it is, it is a balance, balancing act. So, those truck roundabouts tend to be larger, so that's something that we should consider if we're comparing it to other roundabouts in residential areas, say in the north end of town. Those don't tend to be the place where we have designed them for trucks, so these would need to be larger radius roundabouts to allow those, the turning around those, those roundabouts for trucks.
I was thinking maybe at Western and Stoll, having it be signalized, but if you want to have more than one roundabout, whether it's at Western and Battles, it seems that those would be cars there and not 18-wheelers.
That's a good point.
Ms. Waterfield.
I don't know if you were on the Planning Commission with me when we talked about the roundabout at Main Street and Panther when the high school was going in and the subdivision, and then you had the straightaway to the landfill with the garbage trucks and the big trucks going to the ag fields and everything, and it concluded that that was a disaster to have a roundabout there, because you had residential, you had ag, and then you had a school. And so, we didn't want to give anybody an opportunity to get confused in a short amount of time when you had to either make a turn or go straight, because you were going to have people right behind you. So, you know, and I see that with, with Stoll Road, there's just no way you could possibly put a roundabout there. That's, just has too much ag, and I don't know, I still feel that in the middle of the subdivision, while that would be pretty, safety is just something that just, you've got a lot of people there, you've got 1,100 homes, and you multiply that by how many cars, and everyone leaving at the same time. I, I just don't agree with that, and that's just my thought, so, thank you.
I personally, I really like roundabouts, except the one on 246, that's a, that's a killer, that's a bad design. But, on the side of town, we know it keeps the traffic flowing, and I almost got wiped out two weeks ago. Someone was, came right next to me and was going the same direction, wasn't going to turn there. And I know that when we first had those in there, we did have policemen and their motors to help educate people on how to use roundabouts. So I, I think roundabouts work really well because they do keep it moving, there are less fatalities, and so you, you've got, you know, fender bedders. But what we're talking over here, so I went and sat there and drove around the block tonight before I came over here. And of course, you have a lot of, it's, it's an ag community, you've got the trucks, you've got trailers, but boy, they're all driving fast down there, and you know that. And then when you talk about parking on Depot, my kids played soccer, just with Adam Park, playing soccer at Adam Park, both sides of those streets were filled. So I don't know how a parking lot with 100 cars, maybe it can, can accommodate what you're going to have there. I, I think it's going to be, the parking accommodations are going to be too, too small. So, but if any of you have had kids that played soccer there, you know that both sides of the streets, well, if you live over there, you see both sides of the streets taken up already with parking. So, anyway.
So, just for clarification, we're not necessarily voting on the details of, of this project site, right? We're not voting on how many parking slots there are, we're not voting on whether or not there's, we should have a roundabout there. It's, it's all more just conceptual at this point, and us voting on the zoning amendments or the general plan amendments.
So, Councilmember Soto, the roundabout in the center of the site is based off a traffic study that was done as part of the environmental review of the project, so that would be part of it. The park design is conceptual, it's included in the specific plan as basically a conceptual plan for future development. And there are probably more than 100 spaces shown there, but the city would definitely be looking to make sure that adequate parking's provided there for the new park.
And I realize it's conceptual, but I think people need to know our experiences and where our positions are. Dr. Moats?
Yeah, oh. Yeah, I was just thinking how frustrating it would be not to be able to find a place to park, and, you know, people that start parking on the residential streets, and that'll tick off the homeowners because they've got people parked in front of their homes. I wonder if maybe having three soccer fields instead of four, and taking that space for the four soccer field and making it into a parking lot so the people who play soccer on the other three fields can have a place to put their car.
Well, it's, it's all conceptual right now on what they're going to do. And I miss, did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you. The roundabout in the center, I, I kind of disagree. I think that it would work, and I give the people that would live there some credit that they would learn how to, how to deal with it. And I like the idea that the roundabout keeps the vehicles moving. And I think that, I think that your explanation that, that they can move a lot more traffic through that roundabout at a slower pace than bringing it with the, the standard four-way intersection. But I would be interested in seeing how, how it, how it comes out. I, I agree that the roundabout on Stoll Road is highly questionable. I think that if we haven't done so, we should probably involve some people from the ag business to, to get their feelings about it. They, they not only have the big 10-wheelers that go through there, but they have some of their trailer rigs that, that they pull that are also quite lengthy and, and might, might be a problem for them. So, if we haven't consulted with the ag people, it's probably a good idea to do so.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I think the applicant is here.
Lori, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hi. Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, I don't know if that can be brought up, and, and I'm not on the screen yet.
Okay, hold on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts, representing the Raffoni, Moretti, and Minetti family, and we're bringing forward today the Area 5B planning area. Just as a little historical context, this property was annexed to the city of Santa Maria in 1993 through the General Plan Update and Sphere of Influence and Annexation Project that was approved by the city council... that was approved by the city council 27 years ago. Over that time, the land use designation, as explained by Dana Ede, has been on the property, and the surrounding neighborhoods have since been built, including Pacific Crest, Harvest Glen, the Westgate Neighborhoods, Heritage at Westgate. All of those 4,000-plus homes have been built over the last 27 years. And as you can see in the photographs, this is the last infill property of the specific plans that were approved at that time. If you could go to the next slide, please. And this is the picture of the neighborhoods, and there's been two school sites built, and there will be the third one on this property that may ultimately be a junior high. Tonight, I'd like to thank the city planning staff and all of the consultants that have worked on this project to bring it forward. It took about four years to get through the process, but tonight we're here to get an approval from the city council. But I do have four items that I'd like to discuss, and many of them you were already discussing here tonight. The first one is that Western running north-south through this site is a collector road. And we did not oppose the roundabout, but we did not propose it. It was something that was recommended by the traffic consultant. And so the center one between Western and La Brea is a feature to slow down traffic near that school site, but we did, again, we did not propose it. If you can go to the next slide, please. The next issue is in regards to the design of the roadways. Whoops. I lost the screen.
Sorry, I'm bringing it right back.
So the road, the last screen had the road width that was seen by the planning commission, and then as the planning commission reviewed the property, the project, they narrowed the road width as Dana Ede explained. My only concern is, am I going to be able to see the PowerPoint again?
Yeah, I'm working on it, Laurie. Go ahead and keep going. We can actually see it here, it's also on the TV.
Okay, so I just have to remember. Okay, the next slide was what the planning commission approved, which was the narrowing of the paved section but adding more landscaping along the roadways. The next slide that I believe you'll see is the cross-sections that were approved in all of the other specific plans that showed the meandering wall that had, you know, about a four-foot meander in it, so that it wasn't just a straight wall, it had some character to it and some unique landscaping and architecture to it rather than just a straight wall running along the road. So all of the roads that have been built in this specific plan area had meandering walls that gave different dimension to the project, to the sidewalks and to the walkways. I think it would not be appropriate to have just straight walls at eight feet behind sidewalk all the way along this property. It just, it will look pretty stark compared to what has already been done. And if you could go to the next slide? And so what I did is take some pictures along. This is, again, Western, you know, it is a straight, these are straight sidewalks, they are not the meandering sidewalks that you see over by College, but this is what staff wanted to see when these projects were built. But go ahead. And you can see that there are trees along the side of the sidewalk that's along the roadway, but then when you get to the, go ahead again. You can see that there's a good canopy, this is 15-year-old walkways, but you also have a meandering along the, go ahead. So you've got shrubbery, you've got trees, you've got a number of different things happening between the sidewalk and the wall, and the last one. I think this one illustrates how even when the wall is closer to the sidewalk, you have what I call a green screen. The anti-graffiti landscaping that's required by the city still provides a lush background to, between the sidewalk and the walls, and it also gives you a variety of vegetation between the walkways as you're going through these neighborhoods. Our request would that be that you go back to what was originally approved in the specific plans, which is the meandering wall. If the sidewalk's straight, that's fine, I prefer the meandering sidewalks, but that's up to the city council to do. But I think the meandering wall makes a big difference in the way these projects are built out. So that's one request. If you can go to the next slide? Oh, I'm sorry, that was just one more. Go ahead. So this was the exhibit that was in the planning commission version of the specific plan, which requires the signalized intersections at Stoll and Western and Battles and Western. These two signals are part of the AB 1600 fee program, they've already been priced out as a reimbursement item, and these are the signals that were studied through the traffic analysis and the EIR. The studies have been done, there's no reason to propose any other studies for these intersections. And if you could go to the next slide. Just to prove the point, College Drive and McCoy Lane, this is the existing roundabout with two lanes of traffic coming into this roundabout. So we used the dimensions of that existing roundabout and overlaid it, so if you could go to the next slide. So this is the Stoll and Western intersection. So not only would you have to buy two homes, but you probably would have to buy the two homes north of that and two homes west of that because you need to add the transition lanes in order to get to the roundabout. So I don't think there's any reason to do any further studies, this is an infeasible suggestion to have a roundabout at this location. So let's go back to the signalized intersection at Stoll and Western. So let's go down to Battles and Western. Again, this is a roundabout that would impact at least three homes because you'd have to tear down the walls behind those homes, and would probably have to maybe even lose some of those homes because of the transition lanes coming north off of Western. And then you'd also have to, the other problem with this particular intersection is that where the walkways are going east-west, there's oil pipelines underneath that area, and so I don't even know if we could install a roundabout at this location without impacting the pipelines that are located under that 30-foot-wide right-of-way. And then, of course, you have the channel to the north that we'd have to be trying to do a roundabout there. So there's a reason why things were done in the past and planned for in the past, and to spend money and time and energy studying something that's infeasible is just a waste of money and time. So let's go back to what was originally designed and approved and avoid spending engineering time on something that is not feasible. So we request that you return the exhibit that shows the signals back into the specific plan. Our third comment, if you would go to the next slide, we request that any illustration or discussion of a pedestrian crossway over the railroad tracks and Depot Street be removed from this specific plan. Keep going. There is a railroad tracks, which the railroad company will not allow us to build anything over it, and we have Depot Street to span, so the, this pedestrian pseudo-bridge would be about 200 feet long, and we'd have to figure out how to get it over the utility lines that are located, there's two rows of utility lines along this section. Keep going. You can see how wide this pedestrian bridge and how tall it would have to be to get over those utility lines. And these are transmission lines, and they just recently installed new poles on these transmission lines, so it's unlikely that they would want, the utilities would want to have anything to do with undergrounding these or removing them. So go to the next one. This is an example of a pedestrian crosswalk out in Guadalupe. This is very old, but this is the structure that staff's talking about building across Depot and other railroad tracks. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. This is one that was recently built in San Luis Obispo, and you can see it's about three stories tall, and it was designed for the ADA access and bike access, and it's over $7 million crossing. So go ahead. Whoops, go back, sorry. So what the specific plan says is they want this pedestrian bridge, that it will become an AB 1600 park fee. And you know how expensive those park fees are right now. This structure should not be included in the AB 1600 fees, it should not be included in the specific plan, and it should, the city council should give staff direction to remove this concept off of this plan and out of the AB 1600 fee program. It's, I'd rather see this money spent on soccer fields and recreational amenities instead of a steel structure. So that's the third item. And then, of course, the last item is in regards to the, oh, keep going, I'm sorry. Yeah, keep going. You know what, I think I'm done of those. The last, the last item, which I'm sorry, I don't have slides for, was on the channel, and the channel was built 15 years ago. It was engineered by the city of Santa Maria and Flood Control. It was the feature, the preferred feature to convey water through what used to be called the Green Canyon Tributary. They wanted it to be size large so that it could take overflow water from the city all the way through to the A Street Basin. The property is owned by the city, it's owned by, or managed by Flood Control, and developers paid for that previously to be constructed the way it is on both sides of Battles and Blosser, or north of Battles Road. If the city wants to redo this channel into a pipe with a green belt, then it should be a city project. It's not on the project site, it works perfectly fine. On the other side of Blosser Road, there's been added landscaping and improvements done to the area by Heritage and by Villa de Sol Senior Project. And this added cost seems to be a preference rather than a necessity, and we do not agree that this should be added to the cost of development for this project. So we had the four items that we talked about. Again, number one was the collector and the roundabout, and again, on Western, and that was not our proposal, but it is okay that it's on there. We believe that Stoll and Battles should be signalized at Western on both sides, and let's just defer doing any additional studies. The pedestrian bridge should be removed from any proposal on this specific plan and in the AB 1600 fee program. And the channel, if the channel is going to be redesigned and rebuilt, it should be a city project and not tied to this development. Otherwise, those are our last points, we've worked well with staff, and these were the ones that they said need to come before you as a decision-maker to provide direction. And we want to thank the staff and thank the planning commission for their consideration, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Tamora?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Waterfield.
Laurie, on the channel on the west side of Blosser, is that city-owned or county flood control-owned?
My understanding is that the right-of-way is owned by the city, and the channel is managed by Flood Control.
Okay. And so you want the city to take the entire channel of the area where you're developing?
No, the channel, the channel that runs along the south side of this property is already owned by the city of Santa Maria, it was dedicated 15 years ago. They took property off of this site for the dedication of Battles Road and the channel, and that was built for the developments that are built already, and so it's owned by the city, it's not owned by the Raffonis or Morettis or-
Owned the county, it's not Flood Control, it's the city owns this.
Yes.
Okay. Question to, yes. Okay, so the question is, if this is a city-owned piece of property, are you wanting the county to take that as a flood control and have them develop it, or have the Acquist Apache Development foot the whole bill for that?
Yes.
If I may respond? We're not proposing anything. This is being directed onto this project by city staff to rebuild that channel. We are not, we're not supportive of it, we don't agree with it. This is an added cost to this development that does no benefit to us as the landowners immediately north of this channel. It's owned by the city, it's managed by Flood Control, it's not our responsibility or our project.
Laurie, what would the estimated cost be, just a roundabout figure, added onto this project?
It would probably be a million dollars. I'm just throwing out a number, but it's, you know, we've got to put pipe in there, we've got to reconstruct it and rebuild it and fill it with dirt, and then landscape it for the long-term, you know, responsibility of the site.
Okay, okay, thank you. I've got somebody else at the podium.
Okay, Mr. McEwen is going to speak to this.
Yes. So my question to you is, why are you asking them to do this?
Sure, thank you, Councilwoman Waterfield, Honorable Mayor. So the frontage, excuse me, along Battles is, has two items, it has a flood control channel, it has a road. There are frontages all around this property, and city standards and city codes say when a developer brings in a development project, they upgrade their frontages to meet current standards. So that's the issue with the channel, is it is old, it is, it was constructed quite a while ago, it doesn't meet current standards. And that, so it is appropriate for the development because they're draining into this channel to bring that up to current standards. We've been in close coordination with Flood Control on this, they would, they've indicated that they would look to maintain the standard if we would support bringing it up to current flood control standards. We think the best solution to that, there's a couple different things they probably would accept, one of them would be a lined concrete channel that isn't as aesthetically pleasing, that would also be in that same kind of range of costs. So I think planners and the engineers have got together and come up with a solution that looks nice, would meet the county standards, and give the community a great asset to along that frontage.
Would that be less expensive to build?
Less expensive than-
Than the $1 million price tag that Laurie just indicated?
No.
No, I think what she was indicating was the proposed city undergrounding would be a million dollars, I think that's what she was saying. So the other alternative that Flood Control says would meet their standard would be a concrete line channel, an open channel line, that would also be very expensive. So I think we're looking at expensive solutions either way.
Okay. So when the TOCs put their development in across the street, across Blosser, were they required to do the same thing in regards to the flood channel that you're asking this development to do?
No.
So, so I think Flood Control had standards that were not followed, and therefore the city accepted responsibility and long-term maintenance for that channel because of that. So if the city is looking to minimize maintenance, long-term maintenance costs, we would like to work with Flood Control on upgrading these facilities to meet- to work with Flood Control on upgrading these facilities to meet, meet current standards.
Okay, so, you, you're saying that in the TOBS project, they were not required to do that because the city just didn't ask them to do that? Is that correct, Mr. Stillwell?
They're required to be built to a certain standard for Flood Control to maintain them, and Flood Control, County Flood Control is the agency that has the revenue source that our taxpayers already pay in order to maintain these facilities. So, that's when, when Mr. McKeon's saying it's in the city's interest to build it to a standard where they will maintain it, that's the goal then, for the ongoing maintenance to be covered by the county flood control costs.
Okay, so, but my question is, the TOBS development didn't have to build any of that to the city standards?
The county.
The county standards? We just gave them a pass on that and said, you don't need to do that?
Yeah, I don't know if we gave them a pass. I mean, yeah.
Only because I just want to make it fair if that's what we did.
Yes.
I can, I'm sorry, Councilmember Waterfield.
That's okay.
There was discussion at that time, as Mr. McKeon mentioned, County Flood Control would accept a concrete line channel. At that time, there was discussion between Public Works and Engineering and the Community Development Director at the time regarding the aesthetics of having a very large trapezoidal...
And we're talking about the TOBS group, right? Are we talking about the TOBS development or this new?
West of Blosser. So, it would be, at the time, I think it was Martin Farrell Homes?
Yeah.
Not Martin, yes. There was a, the discussion was that to meet County Flood Control standards, it would need to be a, either a pipe or a lined trapezoidal channel, which is the same shape as the channel, but it would be shockcrete or concrete. It probably would, it wouldn't be much more aesthetically pleasing than going north on Blosser, on the Blosser Channel and that sort of thing. So, at the time, the city's Community Development Director and the Planning Department looked at that and said that that, due to the, for lack of a better term, the aesthetics of putting in a concrete line channel, they would rather have it a soft-sided channel, what we have out there now. And based on that, that was the decision that was made, that it would be landscaped. Over the years, as we've seen it, that facility takes a lot of silt. There is silt buildup which causes issue in online channel. There's no easy way to remove that silt. And to Mr. Stillwell's point, Mr. McKeon's point, the city has no funding mechanism in place for the maintenance of a channel such as that.
What's silt?
Huh?
What, what's silt?
So, the, right, so, the, this particular, it's, what's interesting about this facility is at the end of Battles, there's the large basin that we're all familiar with at, at A Battles. That is a County Flood Control facility. Then, if we continue east from there up this trapezoidal channel, the part that's, you know, tries to have a little landscape on it up to Blosser, is city maintenance, because at the time, the city chose not to have it built to county standards, not really taking into account what the long-term maintenance and what this, how do we own this thing as it moves forward? From Blosser Road then continuing east to roughly the railroad tracks where it's a channel, is, as Ms. Tamora mentions, is city. Right away, it's city-owned. Interestingly, from there, working its way southerly towards Sonia Road, is a County Flood Control facility. Then it dumps into Sonia Basin, which on the map was originally said to be built and dedicated to Flood Control, but Flood Control didn't take responsibility of it, so that's a city basin. And then from there, continuing easterly almost all the way through town, is a complete County Flood Control facility. This is the same facility that eventually works its way up to the government center at Betaravia, and actually takes flows from the agricultural facilities on the east side of 101, coming under McCoy, by the crossroads area, the crossroads basin, down by the government center, down through town and around that way. The lion's share of those facilities are County Flood Control because they are created, that's why that entity exists, for the purpose of these large facilities that each property within the city is assessed.
Okay, and thank you for that explanation, but I will go back to my original question. Did we ask the developer on the west side of Blosser to do any special type of rebuilding or redoing any kind of extra expense when they put in that development? Or did the city just let it go and just?
Other than the landscaping that was put in, that was the choice that the city made at that time, to not have it built to county.
Okay, that's, so the answer would be okay. They didn't have to do it?
Correct. The developer did do improvement.
They did do improvements on that, Jason?
Correct. So, there is like a small ribbon gutter that runs down the middle of the channel for the low flow, as well as on the landscaping of the channel.
And so, the improvements that we're asking for of this development here is, is going to be something that is just going to be extraordinary or not?
Yes.
It's the, it's the ordinary county standard. So, as, as Mr. Springer mentioned, some of it upstream and downstream has varying standards, some of it's dirt, some of it's lined, and so the, what Flood Control is asking for is before they can take it over, they basically want to study the hydrology of it, understand how much water goes through there, then they can figure out how much it's going to cost to maintain and how to maintain it, and then recommend what type of structure it should be.
My, my question is, okay, so, the, the County Flood Control is sort of in charge of the maintenance? Okay. And it belongs to the city. How come we never put it into a landscape district at any time? I mean, I, I guess I'm just wondering, okay, we're, we're down at the end of the line with all this development, so we're saying, okay, lucky you, you get to pay for it now, because did we just goof, I mean, the city? I mean, and so?
It's been, there's been different approaches to it over the years, I would say. Some of them actually are in the landscape district, and again, the landscape district wasn't originally funded to pay for this either. So, those are costs that our, our local taxpayers pay to have the nice medians and the nice landscaping that we're using to get silt and dirt out of the bottom of basin. So, there are some of those we have. There are some that we have, as Mr. Springer mentioned, that we don't have any maintenance for, and that's, bill's going to come due, and someone's going to have to dig the dirt out of the bottom of it. And then there's others that we have built to a standard where the county has taken them, and they're, and that, the point we made is, I mean, our taxpayers, our residents are already paying County Flood Control to maintain these things, whether they're maintaining them or not.
Dr. Woods, did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Okay.
We talk about silt building up in these trapezoidal concrete runways. Doesn't silt build up in underground conduits as well? I'm sorry. Yes?
Yes.
How do we get, it would seem like it'd be easier to get rid of it if it were underground than underground.
Yeah, it's, if, Chad, if I go off track, just let me know. So, certainly both of those will need maintenance, and that's, that's kind of the point, is I don't think the city has built and has a staff dedicated for those maintenance duties. That's important to, to bring these up to standard so that Flood Control will take these on and assume that responsibility, and I think the city is looking for them to do. To answer Councilmember Resto's question, silt is the, the waterborne dirt that is picked up off the field as it makes its way. As the velocity slows down, the dirt comes out of the, comes out of the solution and starts filling up the, the bottom of the facilities, so.
So, can I just keep going? Okay. So, let's say this project weren't going to be built at all, but we're going to allow it to remain in agricultural fields. Would the water runoff facilities that we have now need to be repaired anyways? They don't meet county standards. Would we still try and underground a tunnel even if this project weren't going online?
If, if the, the proposed project, would we upgrade the, the channel that we're talking about?
Yes.
I doubt it. There's no, there would be no mechanism, no funding to do that, so. So, this is, just like all, just like when we put in sidewalk and we upgrade, we widen streets, and we, we do all the infrastructure needed to support that development, that only, that usually only happens with a development. We don't, we're not usually in the business of building new streets all by ourselves and, without the support of the development.
Well, I'm sure the developer's concerned about getting stuff, the developer to do the entire thing, even though it benefits the whole community. That can only be done because he's the only one that can afford it. Is that right?
Well, it is a project-specific requirement. The, the city council could, this is probably an eligible item for the impact fee program. The council could decide to do that.
Excuse me, I couldn't, I couldn't understand.
Can you take your mask off?
I'm sorry. I'm so used to wearing it now, I forget I have it on now. So, Councilmember Moats, to answer your question, the, so the funding of this facility could be offset if it was put into the AB 1600 impact fee program? It is not currently in there. So, we generally put projects in that program that, that are for capacity expanding for future development. So, it's a bit awkward because it's needed specifically for this development, and, and I want to make sure that city attorney's office was comfortable with doing that. But that could be a way to offset some of the costs, but moving forward. It wouldn't be 100% because none of the projects in there are funded 100%, they're like 20% funded, but that would be one way to create a, a revenue source.
And it would, that would be funding just for the one-time cost of the study and the construction. The ongoing costs would, the city still wouldn't have funding for that, as that's not an eligible revenue source for us to use for that. So, we'd still suggest it be county standards.
Do we have other things like that in the city that we are not aware of that? Oh, okay. Okay.
Interesting. Okay.
If we didn't do anything, and this project went in, the water runoff during a storm overwhelmed the current facilities that we have, we'd need to achieve the walls to the current conduit to gather that to the A Street Basin?
Yeah.
So, those studies haven't been done yet. We anticipate that there is upgrades needed to the channel because of this development, and that's why there's, that's why the, the proposal is to upgrade this channel.
So, the current facilities would be inadequate to take the runoff during a large storm, and bad things would happen?
Well, that's yet to be verified, but, because we haven't, don't have the project-specific proposal yet, we don't know what the runoff is going to be yet. But that is typical, that we upgrade our frontages to meet current standards.
And you got to remember that this was once a flood zone a long time ago, so we used to, we used to have the water going through there.
I have Mr. Pasada on the phone, and Lori that would like to speak. So, Mr. Pasada?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. So, my only comment was going to be related to the, related to the channel, is from a landscape maintenance perspective, the west channel along the TOBS project and the project has been problematic for us since the development started. The grades on the banks make it nearly impossible to keep any material established. Anytime we get any signal...
You're, you're cutting, you're cutting out, so I'm not even understanding what you're saying, Mr. Pasada?
Erosion.
You didn't hear me. Can you?
I...
You're cutting out. I can't even understand what you're saying. Can you start all over?
Sorry. Okay, I will, sure. Is that better?
Yes.
So, the problem, the problem that we have is with erosion on the banks of the, of the west channel that's there now, the TOBS projects and the other project there. And so, it's, the fee that we assessed was based on just regular maintenance of landscape material, and now we're finding ourselves having to go in and spend money to repair erosion damage. It's just not a good design to have that kind of bank area and then have landscaping, or at least extensive landscaping along it. It, it will increase the assessment. And I think visually, you'll notice the, that the channels typically have lots of weeds in them, which is something we don't maintain, and that's something that would need to be addressed, you know, if the channel was left open. Obviously, it'd be much nicer to have a, a landscape area from the railroad tracks to Blosser Road that provides some kind of a connection to the future sports complex there, you know, a nice meandering sidewalk, trees, and those kinds of things. So, again, from our perspective, I think that having it left open would be more difficult to maintain and would essentially end up with a larger assessment for the residents of that area. And then aesthetically, it would, I think it would be a problem there. Those were all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
So, I really appreciate the deliberations here tonight. I think if we go back through the items that we talked about, as far as the traffic studies on Stoll, Western, and Battles and Western, if we just go back to the signalized intersection, we probably eliminate $100,000 traffic study. If we eliminate the pedestrian bridge and not even include that in the AB 1600 fees, we save a mil, $5 million so that we could work with the city on, on dealing with this channel design and, you know, do what we can to work with the city and Flood Control to deal with this feature, and I think then the city wins on all counts.
And Madam Mayor, I would agree with that. I'm glad that, the diagram was showed for the roundabouts and how large they were, because you couldn't make those roundabouts any smaller, because you have, that's a high-traffic area on both sides. So, I think the signal lights on Battles and Stoll would be...
Okay, Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for staff regarding those roundabouts and that diagram that Lori Tamora showed us. Thank you for that, by the way. It was a great visual. Have, those traffic studies have not been conducted yet, right? And so, is, right now for those streets on Battles Road and Stoll Road, are those still just conceptual, like possibilities that a roundabout could be there if through traffic studies find to be more useful than a traffic signal?
Thank you, Councilmember Soto, Honorable Mayor. So, the, the Planning Commission asked that those studies be done and bring back to the Planning Commission. So, that, that was the idea, is, does it make sense? Does it work? Bring it back and let us, let us consider that before they made a decision. So, I think they kept, the idea was to keep it open-ended and make that decision after the studies were done. So, the answer is yes, that they're conceptual at this point, the design is not pre, preset.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Waterfield.
Yes, Madam Mayor, you know what? If the Planning Commission is going to request that, and when you look at the original plan and its approval, then let the city pay for those traffic studies. If they really want to know if that's going to make a big difference, because you can't put it on the back of developers, because somebody has a whim that this is what they want. They're not paying for it. And this is what just makes me so doggone angry about some planning commissioners that want to just flip it, put it on the developer. You looked at those diagrams, common sense would tell you, you can't make it any smaller for the traffic that's going to be running through those streets. It's just so damn frustrating.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilwoman Waterfield. It seems like that would be a good compromise, to signalize the two intersections, to forget about the bridge over the railroad tracks, and perhaps the developer can kick in some more money for the flood control channel and beautify it. So, I think that sounds like a good compromise.
I do, too.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is regarding that, is it a clarification on the crosswalk bridge that, that was on the report? I believe there was one, was it on Western and on Depot?
Yes, so, Councilmember Soto, Madam Mayor, there, in that circulation plan that I showed, there is a pedestrian bridge crossing that is shown, crossing from the park over Depot Street to connect to the Menami. That is in the specific plan as a future option, if AB 1600 fees were available. And we would be, staff would be supportive with taking it out if your council would like to do that.
But would that, would that still be able to be incorporated in the future if it's completely removed?
If, no. So, if it's completely removed, it's, well... So, if it's completely removed, it's, well, it still would be a potential, I think. It just wouldn't be in the specific plan. The city could potentially do it as a project, but it would not be in the, noted in the specific plan like it is now.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the city to take on the cost of all of this, what is, what is that doing to future projects? Is the city going to take on the cost for all of these future projects? I think that that's something to be considered. I think that a project could come up two, three years from now and say, "Well, this is what you did over there at the 5B project, so you guys pay for it." And I, I think historically, when we, when we request things and improvements, the developers pay them. So, I would, I wonder what we're getting ourselves into by doing something like this. Is that what we're prepared to do?
No.
Ms. Waterfield?
Not at all, because when a project is already approved with certain entities in it...
The project's not approved?
It was approved in 1993. The whole, the whole thing was...
A lot of years have passed.
Yes, it has, yes, it has. And so, when we want to go and make these huge changes, and the developer doesn't want to do it because the practicality of it and the usage of the signal lights are still a common sense structure of this, of this whole development, why would we want to ask them to do something that we want, because we want it? You know, and it's, you're spending somebody else's money.
I think the answer to that question is that times change, Mayor. Times change, and we had the same, we had the same issues come up when we finally approved the Union Valley Parkway that was on the books for 26 years, I believe?
Or better, yeah.
And, and I believe I sat in that chair and said, "If we can't approve this in 26 years, then let's take it off the books."
Well, see, and that's my point. It was approved. It was approved, and we got it built just as it was. And so, this is the same thing. This is the same project that has been approved, and this is what, you know, this is what the developer's asking, "Let's approve it like it was without any of those other additions." So...
You're, I think you're wrong. It wasn't approved and built just as it was originally approved. There were additions made to it, and the developers had to pay for those additions.
The meandering sidewalks and things like that, yes, which this developer is willing to do here as well.
So, I just, I just think that we could be getting ourselves into something, Mayor.
I think what Ms. Waterfield is saying, when it comes to a roundabout, it takes more room. And when Lori did the circle, that means those properties are going to have to be purchased to do that. And I went through this on SP Keg on Highway 166 also, and the amount that, of land that it does take. And, and I like roundabouts, and someplace they, they work well. I think that we that travel those roads know what, what travels those roads and how fast they travel the roads. And so, I think the Planning Commission made a bad call on it. That's, you know, I, and I agree, things do change.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Soto?
If I may, you know, I, I think, you know, as, as I'm hearing these, as we're having this conversation tonight, you know, I'm astonished by, by how much we focus on building our cities around cars rather than people, one. Two, you know, we're so frustrated and upset about putting, you know, the burden on developers, but yet forget the burden that our residents have every day. Three, you know, I, I'm, I will say that I'm pleased to hear that it sounds like we've made, you know, some concessions on how this channel will, will be paid for, right, the undergrounding of this channel will be paid for, which I'm really pleased. And I would just like to remind the council that these roundabouts that we're talking about are still very much conceptual. The moment we approve this tonight, regardless of how it goes, the value of this property will go up exponentially. The developer, the owners, I'm sure will still make a purty penny, I'm not concerned. So, you know, I am willing to, to, you know, I just, I guess I just want to remind us that the roundabouts are still conceptual. I think we should have an open mind as to how traffic will flow better for, for this neighborhood, and, and not be so close-minded on, on, of change, to change. But, I do want to say that I'm glad we were able to at least make some concessions around the underground channel.
Dr. Moats?
Well, again, I think a good compromise would be, we're all sort of in agreement that, at least I am, that signals would be better, certainly in Stoll and Western. And I, do we want to spend, or have the developer spend $5 or $6 million for a bridge to nowhere? It can't probably be built anyways, because the railroad won't permit it. Do we need to expend a lot of money on a traffic study for roundabouts when that money could be used, say, to underground the flood channel? So, I think it's simple. We can right now, say, signalize the intersections and no bridge, and maybe put the flood channel underground.
I think, did we have Lori? Oh, Lori wanted to speak. Lori, are you there?
Yes, first of all, thank you very much, and, you know, the, the issue of the channel, I think, I think if we just move, I'm hoping that you'll move forward with eliminating the roundabout studies and eliminating the bridge, and we will work with flood control and the city on the design for the channel. And I think with that, we can move forward with this project. And remember, this project's going to be doing full frontage improvements along Blosser and Stoll, and now we're talking about Battles, including landscape medians on both Battles and Stoll. This project carries a lot of costs with it that are not being discussed tonight because we've already conceded to those improvements. You're going to see a much better roadscape and streetscape and pedestrian walkways and recreational amenities all within this project. So, you know, I, I hope that that message is received, that nobody's getting away with anything here. These are homes for future residents of Santa Maria, and we want to make it the best project possible. We just don't want to take on liabilities that are over and above what anyone else in the city of Santa Maria's had to take on to build in this city. We still have over $50,000 per home of AB 1600 fees that we're paying, plus school fees, plus a number of fees. So, we're not getting away with anything. This will be a beautiful project with a new school and new parks, you know, the soccer fields that everybody wants. So, please, please take that in mind, though, that this is going to be a very nice project for the residents of Santa Maria. So, I'm sorry, thank you.
And Lori, you agree to the meandering walls and sidewalks as well?
Yes, I was hoping that you would still incorporate the design of the meandering sidewalk as has been incorporated with the other projects within the specific plan areas.
Okay, great.
Wait, so...
Oh, Ms. Soto?
Thank you. So, I have a question. So, does that mean that the way that, the way that it's, oh, my stuff went away, the way that it's on our report with, I lost it.
Instead of being straight, it would be meandering?
Yeah. Okay. Is it, can, can staff explain to us how the Planning Commission came to that conclusion of having it straight versus that word?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto, so, the changes that were made at Planning Commission were really to remove the on-street parking. There was discussion that if the on-street parking were removed, that a trade-off could be additional landscaping. So, the figure that I showed was updated to include that eight-foot-wide landscaped area along, adjacent to the wall. The specific plan doesn't prohibit a meandering wall, but it does have that section which has an eight-foot minimum landscaped area. So, that, that's a difference between what's existing on Western. The existing section of Western to the south has four feet to eight feet that kind of goes along with that meandering wall. So, if we wanted to do what's approved, or for what's approved on Western to the south, then we would just need to update the specific plan to reflect that change.
I mean, I, I think, I would not be okay with making that change that Ms. Tamara's asking. So, I...
Which, which change?
The meandering, the...
Meandering.
Meandering.
The back. English was my second language, so bear with me, y'all. The wiggly. Yeah, so, I, I, I live on the other side and of West, of Battle, no.
Battles.
Battles, yes, Battles. And so, that, yeah, so I would say, I would say that as a resident who lives in that neighborhood, I would love to have additional landscaping, have additional buffers between, you know, the roads and, and where I'm walking, and not just have to share one single pathway. And so, you know, as a resident who, who lives there and, and, you know, as, you know, if I know that it could be better after seeing this plan here that the Planning Commission approved, I would not be okay with making those changes.
Okay. I think we, I think we've beat this to death.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Okay.
Before you make any further remarks?
Yes. Okay. Okay. There are no further questions, I'm guessing, from the council at this point? Do we have any written communications?
Madam Mayor, staff received written communication from Lori Tamara reiterating her comments this evening, and also one correspondence from Esau Blanco, Esau Blanco, saying it was imperative to evaluate the traffic aspect closely so that the city is not set up to fail, and asking that council uphold the Planning Commission recommendation to evaluate the potential alternatives at the project intersections.
Okay.
And then, we have one request to speak, and Michael Grogan is on the line with us.
Oh, okay.
This is Mike Grogan, Santa Maria Benetia School District. Very good conversations, a lot of my questions were answered. This will be the sixth school site in the original specific plans that we've worked on. It'll be the seventh school because the San Francisco School was actually repurposed from the city. I'm glad you're covering the channel, it's an attractive nuisance, and that was of a concern early on. Signals make better crossing for children. Most of the kids, if the new school goes in, will be crossing Stoll Road coming from north, since Jimenez School is to the south and is, is going to be a K-8, so it's not as important there. But, I think on Stoll, and with the truck traffic to the Coolers, to Bonnie Pack, to Al's Performance Industries, that's a busy street. There's going to be a lot, the applicant has made a significant change to the specific point, to the original approval. They've increased the high-density residential by 300%. You know, there is a need for apartments, there's a lot of apartments being proposed now. This is the last kind of big piece. I'm hopeful that we can all, all of the stakeholders can provide what the community needs. I do, I do want to clarify something that Lori said, or someone said, the railroad wouldn't allow anybody to build a structure over the railroad. At the Planning Commission meeting, the representative of the railroad was actually in favor of the pedestrian overcrossing, because he said, and I don't know what this means, the Public Utility Commission was looking at things differently, and some of his board members had left, and I'm not sure what that meant, but he, he was, at that Planning Commission meeting, in favor of the pedestrian overcrossing, which at the time, the city talked about paying with this, with their own fees. So, there's going to be, if it's going to be a viable neighborhood, think about that overpassing before you just throw it away. Crossing the railroad tracks is another attractive nuisance for people and children. And hopefully, the long-awaited school and soccer complex will bring people there, and it will be a densely populated neighborhood. Southwest Santa Maria has the highest densities in the city. So, anyway, a lot of good discussion. Thank you, and for the opportunity to comment. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan. Appreciate your comments. Any other communication? Okay, the public hearing will be closed, and the city, I'll bring it back to the city council for a discussion and action.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Waterfield?
I need to ask the city attorney, on the recommendations, do we make them one at a time and vote at them one at a time, because there's one, two, three, four, five of them?
It is, it is preferable to at least do the, the environmental documents separately, because it has a separate track in the event that there's a challenge.
Okay.
But, you could do the, the environmental document approval, and then I would approve the remaining recommendations of the staff.
And how would we add, and where would I place the removal of the two traffic analysis for the roundabouts on Battles and Stoll?
Based on discussion with community development staff, in the event that you wanted to remove one or more items, you would, you would make the following amendment to the specific plan itself. You would add traffic signals at the intersections of Western and Battles and Western and Stoll, and/or you would potentially remove the pedestrian bridge overcrossing if that's a choice that you guys want to make. Those are the two, those are the two amendments you would make. And that would be, that would be on the second motion.
That would be on the second motion, okay. I was just getting ready to ask you which one that was. Okay.
Okay.
So, with no further ado, Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution certifying, certifying a supplemental environmental impact report, making California environmental quality findings, adopting a statement of overriding consideration and adopting a mitigation, monitoring program for the Blosser, Southeast Area 5B specific plant amendment, general plan land use map amendment, and zone change located at the northeast corner of South Blosser Road and West Battle Roads.
I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I would like to adopt a resolution with amendment changes, approving a general plan land use policy amendment for approximately 146 acres located at the northeast corner of South Blosser Road and West Battles Road, with the amendment changes to be included, to remove the traffic analysis on Stoll, Stoll and Western, and Stoll and Battles, and to remove the bridge...
Bridge.
...out of the 1600 fees?
Off the specific one.
Off the specific one.
And just for point of clarification, it was to, rather than removing the traffic study, it was to specifically add traffic signals at the intersections of Western and Battles and Western and Stoll. Not, that, was that your motion?
Yes, it was, that was my motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I, I am not in favor of removing it from Battles.
Okay, well, you, okay, but you can vote on this.
Okay.
But, it's discussion.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay. Okay.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to approx, what, did I just do that wrong?
Yeah.
Can, just for sake of clarification, you can you can move the adoption of the remaining documents on, all in one, with the two amendments previously accepted.
Okay.
The two amendments. But that included the bridge, too.
That was the, the bridge was one, and the traffic signals were two.
Yeah.
Okay, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to approximately 146 acres of the Blosser Southeast Area 5B specific plan located at the northeast corner of South Blosser Road and West Battle Roads, and declaring consistency with the general plan, plus introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, approving an amendment to approximately 146 acres of the Blosser Southeast Area 5B specific plan located at the northeast corner of South Blosser Road and West Battle Roads, and declaring consistency with the zoning, and that includes the two amended.
And I believe introduce the ordinance and continue to the future meeting for second reading and adoption of the zone change for Blosser Southeast 5B. I believe that other ordinance was part of the recommended action.
Number five, which is the ordinance?
Well done.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay. So the next item will be a report by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. Two reports, actually, tonight. First is on the census. We're at crunch time for the census, so I want to use this opportunity to remind everyone that September is the final month to participate in the 2020 census. The deadline to be counted is September 30, and each person not counted has Santa Maria potentially losing $2,000 per person for the next 10 years. And those are our federal tax dollars that we pay, coming back to our community from any important programs. Participating in the census is easy. You can respond to the census online at my2020census.gov. And the good news about Santa Maria's self-response rate is some of our hardest to count tracks saw a 1.2% to 1.6% increase growth in just one week. That was better than anywhere else in Santa Barbara County. Overall, our self-response rate is at 66.2%, which compares to 68.4% in 2010. And so seeing the 1% growth rate compared to the prior weeks, a pretty good percentage rate increase. And so that percentage rate change in one week shows that the outreach and marketing efforts have helped move our needle. And we would, our areas are considered some of the hardest to count and hardest to reach census tracks within Santa Barbara County, and we're spending close to $25,000 this month on mass media blitz with radio, TV, print, and digital, and English, Spanish, and Misteco. So again, if people can go to my2020census.gov and complete their census. And then the upcoming agenda items, next meeting of the City Council is October 6. And we just have a few items penciled in at that meeting. We have Code Enforcement Appreciation Week and Fire Prevention Week. We have the Chambers Annual Report, and then the CDBG Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 Capital Project Proposals. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Dr. Moats, we start with you with oral reports from the council?
Madam Mayor, I have no report.
Madam Mayor, I have no reports.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Madam Mayor, my report is on September 4. I attended the Latinx and Indigenous Migrant COVID Response Task Force. And then on, was it Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? No, Tuesday, September 8, we had the Downtown Revitalization Committee. And on a fun note, I signed up for the Rec and Parks Yoga Paddle Boating Class here at Paul Nelson. So much fun. My abs are incredibly sore.
How is the downtown revitalization coming? Because people ask me.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, so the last meeting that we attended, and Councilmember Waterfield was there, we were reviewing a project on Main Street, East Main Street. And it was a proposed healthcare facility, daycare facility, thank you, that would be going in there. But there's a lot of conversations taking place right now, especially in those big five parcels in the downtown area.
Good. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did the Ben Hayes Show after the council meeting two weeks ago. And I just want to report that the Community Action Commission has changed their branding, and they're no longer going to be referred to as the Community Action Commission. There was a lot of discussion over the past several years that people were confusing the Community Action Commission with a branch of the government, which it is not. And so we changed our name to the COME Unity. We kind of invented a word. Instead of calling it the Community Action Commission, we're calling it COME and then Unity. So it seems to be getting very positive feedback from the public, and we're happy with it. And you'll see some new things come out with the COME Unity being the old Community Action Commission. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So on September 2, I did the Policy Board for the Monterey Bay Community Power. Did that virtual. I did the Elks Christmas in the Country Steering Committee Meeting virtual. I did the meeting with Updated Santa Maria Key Leaders Call. On the 3, I did the Legislative Briefing Call, which is all the mayors and all the mayors in the county, any of our legislators, Assembly, and Senate people. September 8, did the Observe the Press Conference County of Santa Barbara. On the 9, I did the North County Subregional Meeting, which is on a Zoom. On the 10, I did the Legislative Briefing Call regarding COVID. September 11, we did the commemoration ceremony at the fire station, and did the Fighting Back Board Meeting virtual, and then later did the Mayors and City Managers Meeting virtual. September 15, did the Ben Hayes Radio Show. I got a flu shot today. I am really trying to stay healthier. Any other comments? You know what? I asked for this, and, okay. I don't know if any of you saw in the newspaper where a Judge Llewellyn passed away. And I really wanted to bring this up at the end of the meeting and adjourn the meeting his name, because Royce Llewellyn, Santa Barbara County Superior Court's judge, which the Llewellyn Court is named after, and co-founder of Lucas and Llewellyn Vineyards and community leader, died on September 2, 2020, at the age of 89. And not only did he have a distinguished legal career and was motivated to find work in a small town where he could become involved in the community, and chose Solvang in the 1960s and 70s, where he was a part-time justice for the peace in the San Onofre Valley. He was also accomplished business, had accomplished business career. He was at one time a co-owner and director of Contract Freighters and Nationwide Long-Haul Trucking Company based in Joplin, Missouri, that was founded by his father. He was president of the Solvang Business Association and Solvang Chamber of Commerce, member of the Board of the UCSB Economic Forecast Project for the San Onofre Valley, and one of the founders and longtime member of the Board of the Community Bank of Santa Maria. He partnered with Louis Lucas to develop high-quality vineyards, forming Lucas and Llewellyn Vineyards. And he was a member of my Rotary Group, and such a such a fine person and such a giving person in our community, and we really miss him. He is survived by his wife, Anne Foxworthy Llewellyn, and a wonderful lady who did so much. That's why Hancock looks the way it does today, is because of Anne, and she was very aggressive in getting those things done. But I would like to adjourn in the name of Royce Rutledge Llewellyn. Yes, Mr. Cordero?
I recall, I don't recall the case, but I recall going in one morning after a radiation, and I was tired, and then actually started to call the police. And the defense attorney and the prosecutor were not always on the same side, and, et cetera. And the defense attorney tried to justify it, and the prosecutor asked me why that was happening. I said, I just got off the radiation shift. I was tired. And so after the defense attorney crossed the examiner, the judge says, so you have a question for this witness? And he said, well, I'd like to keep him around just in case. And Judge Llewellyn, first of all, I'm a little bit upset, and he said, this man is tired. He asked to go home. If you have any questions, you ask them now or dismiss them. And I thought, wow. And the defense attorney said he had a number of questions and allowed him home. But I know the judge had done that for me, and he was just a great, great guy. He should be my hope. Just a gentleman.
He was. He was a very, very nice man. If there is nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.